funded session on interlinear gloss texts or conventions for our community. And the idea was that we all use glossing as a means to display our examples. And we do that in various ways, depending on the medium, depending on the publication. So if we're doing a text collection, we often have it maximally specified. If we're doing an article, we might reduce the amount of information we give. But we all use that way of presenting our information. And the thing that we wanted to ask is, do we have any? Have we thought through some standards for how we're doing this? If we haven't thought through those as a community of Sino Tibetan linguists, then do we have conventions that we're using per subgroup? And there are obviously going to be individual variations, one because of the individual researchers, but also because of the languages that we're working on. But are there other types of other reasons for those variations? Philosophical reasons? Are there reasons that have to do with the traditions that we have been studying in the people that we've studied with? And if so, how are those traditions making it more difficult for us to compare across those, those things that we produce? Those text collections, those grammars and so on? So what we wanted to do is to first kind of lay out two or three reasons why we thought that it would be interesting to ask these questions. And have you go out into subgroups and investigate something about how IGT is for your community, for your subgroup community. I'm going to be talking more about that after we hear about from Jim Matasoff about his own thoughts about annotation conventions and the ways in which, you know, he's gone about working on his Lahu texts. So we'll first start with some very concrete and individual, an individual, a very great individual for our field, but one person's view of that and somebody that many of us have been influenced by. And then from that, we will go into our different corners and look at some IGT and see, see what we see. So I will come back with some more instructions. But right now, I want to really thank Jim for coming in to talk to us about this. Many of us have read your grammar, used your texts. And by the way, if for those of you who are interested on the Stead website, you can hear many of the Lahu texts that Jim's been working on, I think. So it's nice to see them there. Thank you, Jim, for coming in and talking to us about this. And I'm going to turn it over to you now and remind everybody that there are handouts, two handouts, and they are in the chat for you to download and use.
Shobana, may I just to interject?
Yes.
Also, you mentioned the breakout rooms for the different languages. I just wanted to ask everyone, as you ready to enjoy and listen to James's presentation, we'll have seven breakout rooms. And so I'm going to list those here momentarily. And as you see them on the list, please go ahead and respond with the room of your preference. So we're talking about Bodhis, Bodhagaro, Lolo Burmese, Naga General, other languages of Manipur, Sino, and South Central TB. Okay.
So just. Can you go over that list one more time? And then, so for example, if Steve Moore wants to be working on, you may not see your most favorite language group. But so if you see Bodhis, then you hear that, you say, that would be interesting. Just type that in the chat. And Adam is going to gather all those together. And then when it's time for us to go to the breakout room, he'll know where to send you. Thank you, Adam, for reminding me of that. I forgot. So can you read the list of names out again, Adam?
Yes, I've got them in the chat room, so.
They're in the chat, okay.
Yes.
And if you're left out, you don't have a choice. We will, we can, we can deal with that. From the main room, we can send you on. So are we ready to start, Adam? Should we turn it over to Jim?
Yes, please go right ahead.
Great. All yours.
Thank you very much. My talk is called Window Into A Forgotten World: Lahu Texts From Thailand In The 1960s. This is what the title I'm going to give to the published texts also. So in addition to my comparative historical work on Tibetan Burman, I've been rather preoccupied with the Lahu language for over half a century. As most of you know, Laos is a Tibetan Burman language with seven tones closely related to Burmese, with nearly a million speakers concentrated in Yunnan Province, Shan State of Burma, Northern Thailand, and Northwest Laos. There are also a few hundred Lahu now living in the US, mostly in the Visalia region of the Central Valley of California. I worked on Lahu during three major field trips to Northern Thailand in 1965, 66, 1970, and 1976, with many shorter trips since then. There had been a fieldwork tradition at Berkeley, notably upheld by my mentor Mary Haas, that in order to do a respectable job of studying an exotic language, one should produce a grammar, a dictionary, and a collection of texts. This has been referred to as the Boazian trifecta in honor of the great anthropologist Franz Boaz, who was the principal originator of the idea of cultural relativism. So I have dutifully produced a grammar, the Grammar of Lahu in 1973, and Dictionary, Dictionary of Lahu in 1988. The hundreds of texts I recorded in the 1960s are now in semi-final shape. In spite of some remaining problems with formatting, they've been accepted for electronic publication by Academia Sinica in Taipei, hopefully by the fall of 2021. In some ways, this third leg of the tripod is the most important of all, since my grammar and dictionary have depended largely on the analysis of these texts. My consultants were mostly Christian villagers in Northern Thailand, especially from a wonderful village called Huayta, about 60 kilometers north of Chiang Mai. I've actually taken several guests there over the years, including Boyd Martin and Graham Thurgood, and actually Benedict also. Once the villagers figured out that I was, after natural speech, I would choose a topic, say, building a house, or picking tea, or hunting crabs, or whatever. And they would often act out little skits about it, even conducting rehearsals beforehand, often including sound effects like gunshots or dogs barking. It must be admitted that I sometimes turned on the tape recorder while they were still rehearsing, in order to get still more natural speech. A word about equipment. Obviously, my texts were recorded decades before the advent of computers. Thus, they were not born digital, in that nice phrase I learned the other day. I had to rely on primitive reel-to-reel tape recorders, and the recording conditions were far from optimal, since village life did not come to a halt when I was there. The rice pounders kept up a rhythmic background. The cocks crowed all day long. The kids, too young to work in the fields, ran around shouting at play. But everything is relative. If we think of the fieldwork conditions of my late colleague Mari Emano, who died a few years ago, at age 101 and a half, his fieldwork in the 1930s on the Toda language spoken in the Nilgiri Hills of India, he had to use a wire recorder, which was pretty technically difficult to use, I guess. And sometimes he just had to have the informant repeat the same sentence time after time after time till he could write it down. It's a fiendishly difficult phonology of the Toda language. By the way, I can't resist telling the story about what happened to these precious tapes of mine after we returned from Thailand in 1966. We were picked up at the San Francisco airport by my brother-in-law, also called Jim, who drove a little VW Bug. There were four people in the car, so some of our baggage, including my tapes and fieldos, had to be crammed onto the roof rack. Jim had neglected to bring bungee cords or twine, so we headed out to the foodway, hoping for the best. Unfortunately, the suitcases soon flew off the roof onto the highway, spewing the reels of tape all over. But there was a happy ending. The martyred tapes were wrapped in a quilt and rescued from oncoming traffic. And the magicians in the Berkeley Language Lab were able to restore almost all of them, although with some loss of their already not wonderful fidelity. Okay, genres of the text. The text cover a wide variety of genres, including discussions of serious topics, village life and customs, subsistence activities, free candid conversations, fables and edifying stories, myths and fairy tales, jokes and anecdotes. Bilingual humor is a subtype of that. These are jokes which revolve around a misunderstanding between, say, a black Lahu and a yellow Lahu, or between a Lahu and a sham, because of lexical problems. Also religious texts, pre-Christian, so-called theo-anemistic texts. By theo-animism, it's an animism nature, nature gods and stuff. But above that, a supreme being, who you can pray to, but who was viewed as a kind of supreme spirit. And also Christian texts, of course, and songs, religious and secular, several hundred texts. A word about transcriptions. There are no fewer than four different transcriptions in useful Lahu. One of these, developed by Catholic missionaries, is too complicated and is only used by a handful of people. So that's all I have to say about that. The oldest one is introduced by Baptist missionaries in China and Myanmar dating from the late 19th century. They have good notation for the tones, except that the tonal diacritics appear one space after the vowel. That's not. Froze, Jim.
Should we text him? I don't really have.
I have his phone number. Let me see if I can call him right away.
Okay.
It's been about 30 seconds, so.
Yeah, it should un. I'm going to also, maybe we can all get rid of our video just to lighten the load on our end as well. While we're waiting, I'm going to give you the link to the IGT digest. I don't know how many of you got a chance to look at it. So you can go investigate.
I think he's big.
Okay.
Yes.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you.
Sorry, I was getting a robocall and that ruined my, myself. Sorry about that.
The robocall was, I think, me, Jim, but.
Oh. Okay, where was I? The different systems.
Your tapes were saved and.
I'm talking about the different organizations.
And that's true.
Yeah. One of the problems with the Baptist system is that the tone marks are written one space after the vowel. There are no hyphens between syllables of the same word. But it does have a lot of advantages. It rotates the tones accurately and so forth. The next one is the Chinese transcription, which is based on the same principles as the Pinyin system for writing Mandarin, that is with arbitrary consonants at the end of the word to indicate tones, which is possible since in native words, there are no final consonants in Lahu. And finally, there's my transcription, which is phonemic, but it's kind of difficult to use. I've written about this, about my regrets on the score. For example, I used unnecessary symbols known only to linguists, like enma instead of ng, and shachek instead of sh. Also, I phonemysized it so that there are certain phonological rules, which you have to, the user has to apply, like the five palatal consonants, j, ch, sh, ya, all have dental alaphons before bar and i, yielding z, s, z. And on the other hand, the labial initials p, ph, b, and m are all affricated before u, yielding f, v. N is paralyzed to n before i, but I just write it mi. In the Baptist orthography, both bar and i and u are written as uh after paladins and libials, confusing the phonemic situation. Still, elegant phonemic analysis does not necessarily make a writing system easy to use. A big problem with my dictionary, which is a 1,436-page job, is alphabetical order. I thought it would be cool to use a Devon Agarri type alphabetical order for the initial consonants like that of Thai and Burmese, that is starting with the back of the mouth and moving forward. So the postveilers, the veilers, the paladins, labials, fricatives, and finally, the lateral l. The nine vowels are also in a rough approximation of the Devon Agarri order, i, u, o, followed by e, r, u, and u. And the seven tones have their own order. So despite the fact that each page of the dictionary has the order of consonants, vowels, and tones printed at the bottom as a footer, it is sad but true, that with a tiny number of exceptions, no Lahu can really use my dictionary with profit. My original idea was to publish the texts in such a way that users could pick their favorite transcription, but this tripled the size of the manuscript. The version in my transcription alone comes to about 1,200 pages. The new plan is to have three separate electronic versions, allowing the users to choose their favorite one. So over the past few years, a succession of talented graduate students working on my step project have taught me how to use Flex, a word-by-word glossing program developed by the SIA at UT Austin. Once you get to know it, it's a fine program, despite some bugs here and there. Okay, now we'll get to the presentation of the texts themselves. Each line has a conglomeration of three, three items. First comes the original Lahu in my transcription. And under this, a form class designation. Then under this, a word-by-word gloss. After this, we get the free translation. And finally, notes on difficult or interesting points. So at this point, I feel I should offer a few apologies. I don't do PowerPoint, even though my younger daughter has repeatedly offered to teach me. But as I say in Chinese, lao gao, shiabu huai, xinhuaiyang. You can't teach an old dog new tricks. But there are a couple of handouts on the website, which contain a list of my form classes and then the two sample texts I'll be talking about. So as you can see, if you have the form class abbreviations in front of you, there's a large number of them. Three pages or so. And they're fairly detailed. Yes, in fact, when Odikori reviewed my Lahu grammar, he was generally very positive about it. But he talked about my list of symbols and abbreviation. He says, alas, the deep page, alas, 10 pages long. So I have made no effort to follow anybody else's conventions in form class designation. For example, the lingua system, which was devised years, decades after my own system was created in the 1960s. In my view, one size certainly doesn't fit all. One needs a more subtle system suited to languages like Lahu or Burmese to deal with phenomena like prehead and posthead versatile verbs, the classes of particles, elaborate expressions, and so forth. I should say, by the way, that this was a period when generative grammar was at its peak. And I was sort of swimming against the tide, resisting their idea that all grammars were basically the same in a deep structure, and there's no need to get more data anywhere. I remember Robert Lakoff once said, that's just data. So this was a difficult period in the history of linguistics. Well, I can say a few words about some of these graphical phenomena. I mentioned versatile verbs are similar to auxiliary verbs, but there are dozens of them, some with rather concrete meanings, not just modal meanings, for example. Their meanings as auxiliaries are sometimes quite similar to their meanings in isolation, but are often bleached or grammaticalized. Some of these verbs occur before the main verb, the prehead versusals, but most of them after the main verb, the posthead versal. For example, cha, to look for, seek, as a main verb, means to go and verb head. That's a prehead versatile. Be, to give, as a main verb, means to, a verb for a third-person beneficiary or causi when it comes after the main verb. As for particles, there are dozens of these, and this is the core of the grammar. There are three basic subtypes: noun particles, verb particles, and unrestricted particles. Noun particles occur after nouns, verb particles after verbs, unrestricted particles after either nouns or verbs. Then there are subtypes of unrestricted particles also, those that appear only in non-final clauses, things that mean like if, or when, or although. They're called non-final unrestricted particles. Then those which appear in final clauses, which include emphatic particles, like you got many other Southeast Asian languages, quotative particles, and declarative particles, all kinds of stuff. Anyway, these are categories which are specific to Lahu and to closely related languages. And I don't see any point in trying to force them into somebody else's categories. Elaborate expressions are four-syllable utterances, where either the first and third syllables or the second and fourth syllables are identical. And so either A, B, C, B, or A, B, A, C. Many of these are in everyday use, but some belong to higher registers of the language. Okay, now, big complications. One of the biggest complications is the fact that some morphemes fill more than one grammatical role, necessitating manual intervention in glossing. The most common particle, v, functions as a nominalizer, genitivizer, or relativizer. So each of the tens of thousands of its occurrences has had to be marked manually according to the meaning of v in each particular context. Besides this, there's a problem of homophony. Since many unrelated morphemes have exactly the same phonological shape, including the same tones, these cases must also be glossed manually. A few examples. Ma, in the following tone, means either not, or to be many. That's a rather important difference. O, in the low tone, is a verb particle, meaning completed action or change of state. But as a noun particle, it's evocative. Ka can mean mountain, inside, or coiled up. La can mean tea or come. She means no fruit or round object, or she is. One can multiply examples at will. In languages of this eroded phonological type, with just a consonant vowel and tone, no final consonants, homophony is rapid. Problems with the free translations is the eternal problem of how to stay as close to the original as possible without sounding stilted or unnatural in English. Often, English pronouns have had to be supplied with the original accent. Sometimes, for example, it's hard to determine whether he, or she, or they is meant. There are numbering discrepancies between the Lahu original and the free translations. One reason is my inconsistent treatment of quoted passages, which go on for multiple sentences. Should each grammatical complete sentence be numbered differently? Or should the whole speech term get a single number? Should very short utterances like yes get their own number or be numbered the same as the following sentence? Also, how verbatim should it be? Should one record all the hesitation markers, all the uh's and hm's and stuff? Or should they be lightly edited out? I finally decided to lightly edit them out in most cases. A problem with the notes. In the current version of the manuscript, footnote numbers only appear in the free translations, not in the Lahu texts. Ideally, the number should appear in both places. But how to do this has not been figured out yet. Okay, so finally, the texts themselves. The first one I want to talk about very briefly is the little crabs who walk zigzag. And this is based on, this is an Aesop fable introduced by missionaries. I'm sure, I'm sure you know the story. There's this mother crab who is giving her, her many children lessons on how to walk. And they, they all walk along. And the mother says, no, no, you're walking crooked. You should walk straight. And I say, okay, mother, show us how. And so the mother crab goes exactly the same way as the baby. And the baby say, but you walk just the same as we do. So there's a moral to that story. You can figure it out. Anyway, it's a relatively simple text with only 14 stories. I only wanted to mention a couple of little points here. Do you have it in front of you by any chance, the text?
Yeah, we've got it. Yeah.
Good. Notice in sentence 7.1, this is on page four of the handout, the sentence ends with the particle t, which is a quotative, quotative particle. And you get the same particle in 7.4t at the end, and the same particle in 7.6t. So what this does in narrations of stories is to put a kind of storytelling atmosphere into the whole thing. Like this is all something we've heard secondhand. These are traditional stories. It is said that. And yet it would be terrible to translate every sentence that has j, and it is said that, because you don't have to do that. This is a Lahu convention. Another interesting, interesting construction is in 7.6. They kept, they kept one animal after the other. Theyka is one animal. Is a verb which means to finish, to be done. But in this idiom, it means having finished with one animal, you go to another animal, one animal after another. In that same sentence, you see the versatile, postadversal of tsu, spelled c, bar, i, which is a causative here. Ya ko tu tsu, made them walk on the road. Tsu means to send on an errand, as a main verb, but it gets bleached or grammaticalized after a main verb to mean causative. And I'm pretty sure it's cognate with the Chinese word shu, which means to send on an errand, but also can be used as a causative marker. Well, that's all I'm going to say about the little crab. If you look at the next text, oh, we came from Burma to Thailand. This one is more difficult, more interesting. Much longer, for one thing. I'll just mention a few of the points here. The first sentence, it's translated, if you look at the free translation, which is on page 19, when we're fleeing here to Thailand from where we used to live in Burma, from where we used to live in Burma. The thing is, Lahu has no simple way of saying from. The way you express, there are various ways of expressing it. It's not highly grammaticalized. And one of the main ways of doing it is to say where the action began and use a verb after that. So if you want to say, he fell down from a horse. And we're going to find that pages here. You say, yat la vi, or jin la vi, which means, on top of the, on top of the horse, he came falling down, meaning from on top of the horse, he came falling down. You also notice there was a lot of audience participation in this text. Like one person pissed to the other in sentence 1.2. There's laughter there, the sound of laughter. And in sentence 1.11, somebody says, don't laugh, because they're cracked up at this unusual enterprise of recording, recording texts. I included those because I have a certain realism to the whole thing. Also, there are many elaborate expressions in this text. Let's start with 1.12. Which means to suffer hunger, hunger and cold. This is an A, B, A, C thing. The components mean had to be hungry, had to be cold. Another one is 120. Lo la, lo cha, to beg for food. Lo means to beg, that means to lick literally, or to eat something enjoyable like sugarcane or something like that. So that means to beg to eat snacks and to beg to eat. Lo la, lo cha, but la and cha are sort of synonyms. Sentence 1.28. Havi, havi, poor and wretched. Ha means difficult, or yeah, poor. Ro only occurs in this combination. I translated wretched. And a very common one in 1.31, hale ha ka, happily, or at ease. Hale means happy by itself. Nobody knows, I don't know anyway, what the ka means, but it's there for symmetry. So this is a very striking feature of Lahu. And some speakers manipulate these elaborate expressions with great fluency. So maybe that's enough to give you a rough idea of the. maybe that's enough to give you a rough idea of the agonies and the ecstasies of involved preparing material of this complexity for publication in a way that's accessible and enjoyable, not only for outside linguists, but also for the speakers of the language themselves. And I feel that thus far, I have fallen far short of making it easily accessible to the major speakers. And I can only say what was, what the situation was like sixty years ago. So if I had it all to do over again, I would do it differently. But anyway, it is what it is, as our dear president said. So that's where we are. Thank you very much.
Thanks very much, Jim. A great way of us starting to think about our own practices in animation, because you brought up so many of the things that we also face when we're working on Tibetan Burman languages, Sinatibetan languages, the issue of grammaticalization, polysemy, and the idea of one size doesn't fit all. So what I'd like to do at this point is would anybody have, does anybody have any comments or questions before we go on to our actual workshop-y type of event here?
Well, Jim, the ha le ha ka reminds me a little bit of the Tibetan ha le, which is like an expression of joy or excitement or amazement. And it's been borrowed into stao also as well, and you can use a directional prefix in between ha and le, and you get ha de le, but I don't know if that's anything related.
Well, that's interesting, but that compound ha le is actually analyzable. Ha means soul or spirit, and le means warm. So it makes you, makes your spirit feel warm and you're happy. I think that's, that's what they told me, and in this case, I think their terminology is correct. So that could just be a coincidence about the similarity to Tibetan.
Right, yeah, good point.
Can I make a suggestion? Is everybody can hear me? The, you know, as if you listen to Jim, the way he was talking, he's defining these particles, but all of the particles are actually, the glossing that you're giving them is defined constructionally, rather than these things. I'm becoming more and more kind of and not, not empty, well, and not so comfortable with the whole structuralist approach to, to doing these kind of things and and kind of more adopting a constructionalist approach, because if you look at the history of languages, all the grammaticalization of the uses of these morphemes and whatnot is all within constructions. Grammaticalization occurs within constructions. It's not an individual morpheme that grammaticalizes out of the blue, and it's always within a particular construction. So if you think of like go in English, it's only in the construction I'm going to see the king that this gonna, gonna can grammaticalize. But in other contexts, other constructions, go is simply just a full verb. And if you listen as Jim was talking, each, each one he defined in terms of its function and meaning, he did it on the basis of where it occurs in the construction and, and how it's used in the construction. So one other way of doing it, I don't know if this is possible computationally, but something that maybe think about is rather than trying to say that each morpheme has a particular form class or, or whatever, meaning to see things more in a constructionalist sense, because even like if you read Jialian Ren's grammar of Chinese, he actually kind of acknowledges that the meaning really depends on the construction. He talks about like kuai and how it's different uses, it has completely different uses and meanings in different contexts, but as a structuralist, he insisted on having to give it some kind of form class label. Whereas an earlier Chinese linguist called Li Jingxian had just said that you just determine it based on how it appears, where it appears in the clause. And, and so if you look at the same words, depending on where you put them in it, especially a language like Chinese or Lahu or something, these are languages that don't have morphological change when they're used in different locations. It all depends on where it occurs in the construction, and that's how you understand it. So if, if, for example, a word, whatever the word is, appears in a topic position of a clause, it's going to be understood referentially if it occurs in a predicative position of a clause, it's going to understand the understood predicatively. It's that simple, really. So I don't know if that would be useful computationally. I, I really have a problem with this idea of kind of assuming that there's some kind of abstract world in which these abstract kind of form classes and say, okay, this word is this form class in some abstract world, but in reality, it can also do these other things. I don't know where that's helpful. And I'm kind of uncomfortable with computational approaches that, that do all this tagging and force particular tags onto, onto natural texts. I mean, you can do it post facto, but not, you know, a priori, just deciding that, okay, this word is a certain form class. You have to see how it's used.
Well, sure. And what are, what are the same?
I'm not, I'm not criticizing Jim. I think Jim's got it right. It's just because he was also trained structure as a structuralist. He, you know, had to do this building block kind of thing where you get the, the form classes, but.
Or maybe that's why I have so many different form class designations, because I read that you have to have so many subtypes according to the particular construction something's in.
Right.
And for me, also positioned in the clause is important to, some particles.
Right. No, that's what I'm saying. The way you, you actually talked about them was constructionally, but because of your training, you also had to give that a particular name of as if it existed externally with that name, but it's really, all of your, the way you talked about it was all constructional. So all I'm saying is we're just recognizing what we've really been doing all along, which is recognizing that it's the constructions that define the functions.
But then the whole notion of word by word interlinear glossing
I know. That's what I'm saying. I don't know if it's possible to, go ahead, sorry.
I think that that is exactly like the, the point of it is that there is a, there is a theory behind what we're doing, and we're doing it without thinking. We're taking a lot of interlinear texts and we're, we're chopping things up in different ways. So if we did it the way that you're suggesting, Randy, we would still have to have a theory of where those constructions begin and end. What is a construction? And, you know, how do we justify glossing that one thing in the clause as a, as a constituent or a unit? Do we just by function, but then what is, you know, how do we delimit where the beginning and the end of that?
Well, no, I'm, I'm not saying that you can't delimit it. There, there is, you know, the, the structuralist approach assumes this building block where you have to kind of reductionist, you know, reduce it down to these morphemes and then try to build back up from that. But what I'm saying is you started at a higher level and then you work down, which is the way we actually do work. We, we actually do take the text as a whole and then start chopping it up, just like a child does when they learn the language. They learn the chunks and then break it up later on. And that's how we, we learn the languages as well. And so that, to me, is fine in terms of identifying in the natural text, as Jim did, you know, where he's saying work doing manually is identifying in each context what it means. But what I'm, I think the reason why I'm mentioning this is it seems that this has some kind of computational motivation here, where we're trying to define things ahead of time that a computer can then just recognize. And what I'm saying is that may not be that possible.
Yeah, let me share with you what the motivations are, and I think that's part of it. And part of it has to go, goes back to, let me do the screen sharing first, which I can't do, chew gum and screen share. All right. You don't need all of, all of this material here, but let's just go through it very quickly. So that, okay, so the reason that we're trying to do this, part of it is exactly, Randy, you've kind of hit on that, is saying that if we want to compare across different related languages, do that comparison, and when things line up, we learn something. Okay, we're reinforcing, yes, this is the way that noun phrases work in these languages. This is the way that participant marking works in these languages. That's when things line up. Also, when things don't line up, we learn something. Oh, language two has taken all the auxiliaries and made them into affixes of some sort, or any other way in which languages that are closely related happen to have something slightly, slightly different. And that always happens. There's always something that's different, and we learn something. And also key to the fact that what we're learning is really something special. So what I would like to go back to here is the notion of those people who have not been working on annotated texts yet. This may not be a population that we're thinking of in, in this, in this setting, but it's one that I talked about at the courseel meeting, and I'd like to bring that up again. I have had linguists in India talk about the difficulties that they're facing in doing annotated corporate, because they don't find enough guidance in how to do it. And they're saying, well, we're using Leipzig glossing rules, but that's not enough for us. We don't really know what the traditions are. And I thought, oh, okay, what have we done? What, what kinds of parameters have we set out other than large typological descriptions that might give some guidance there? So one of the things, additional things is, this whole thing of when you're comparing against a, a one language to the other, and you find that something doesn't align, that you realize that you've found something special, and then you can write about that thing. And if you've noticed many of the grammars that come out of, of India don't know how to do that, because they're doing this in a cookie cutter, let me tell you what the words are and where the sounds are and so on. So one of the things that, the reason that I started thinking about this is really this, this idea of giving people some guidance to work in Kuki Chin languages in northeast India, very, very small perspective that I, that I started out with. We did start to talk with our computational linguistics friends, Alexis Palmer, Tarak Rama, who both work here, and others on how we could collect IGT from related languages and do comparison across those languages to description of those languages, and then also perhaps rap, more rapidly do the description of languages that haven't been discovered yet. And then I shared that we really have that much agreement that's going to make it simple to compare across. As you were pointing out, Randy, a lot of times, we have perhaps something that's been labeled as a noun, but it's used in many different ways, not as, but somehow verbally and so on. So it was like, could we stop and, and think about what are the IGT practices within groups? Are there some things that we can, not even to say what needs to happen, not to say they need to be standardized, but to just discover where the, where there's misalignment. So there's some very clear things that we have. Somebody's in the waiting room, Adam, and you could just.
Okay, I, I will get that.
Okay. There is, there are these very simple things like where are the word boundaries? And if you look at the way that Jim, that's very easy, because we've got one morpheme per with white spaces. But there seems to be a lot of variability in the Chin world, definitely, even if you look at money per linguist and the way that they use word and what they define as the word, or if they've even kind of theoried, conceptualized what they're, what they're putting down on paper when they make those white spaces. What are they claiming with those white spaces? How are dashes used? Are they used, for example, if you look at compounds and reduplicated forms, in Jim's example, I noticed there was the reduplicated forms are written separately. Or maybe there was a reduplicated form with a dash and then, but there was like A, B, A, B, and then A, B and A, B are not, they're, they're dealt with as if there were two separate forms, and that's perfectly valid of doing it, but people seem to do it differently depending on, I don't know why, but because I think there's no standard on how to do that. Same thing with compounds. A lot of people don't use equal signs for inclitics. They, they have them, again, sitting separately as a separate morpheme. So what is, what is that? It is, where do we define that? Where do we say what, what is an inclitic, or is there such a thing? Are we just saying that there isn't such a thing and so on? And also, our line divisions are quite erratic, like sometimes when we're looking at the way the texts are broken up, they're broken up by clauses. They're broken up by phrases, or they're not at all broken up. There's just the, the, the words just kind of are the page until you get to a finite verb. Concrete things that we can look at, and that's one of the things we wanted to ask is can we look at IGT, the syntax of how that's done? Something that we were wondering about is the gloss and what is what is determining how people gloss things? Does it have to do with the theoretical tradition that they came from? So here's one that none of us want to see probably, but something like specifier or, or tense phrase or, or or other. I think it was Christine Hilton who was pointing out that many of the, the, the things in Botic come from a tagmemic tradition, and sometimes very hard, hard to read. Perhaps that's both syntax and glossing that we would look at there. Are there things per subgroup, conventions per subgroup, that one could look at as standards for that subgroup? Still allowing for variation between different languages. So if I wanted to put together a primer for doing gloss for a Kuki Chin language, could I do that? Could I at least have some, some basic standards? Are there differences between the way we gloss depending on which schools we come from? The Berkeley School, Latrobe, UT Austin, some things that we've, you know, created since we've been to school. And so are there where are those differences between the ways that we in the same subgroup do things? And are, are there things that we can just, and then figure out if we, we can change or make, make them more similar, if that's useful? And then the last thing, I think, I believe there's one, there are two more parameters. So was syntax, the other one was annotation. The other one, how we deal with polysemy or grammaticalization? Do we, do we gloss things similarly because we know where they've come from? Differently because we know their functions are now different? Do we recognize, do we recognize their synchrony, or do we recognize the diachrony? Or do we confuse the two? Sometimes doing one and sometimes doing the other. And then finally, one thing that seems to be very varied across all of our glossings have to do with, I've called the information structure, and you can add a lot more in here or think of these belonging here, but other way we're doing differential marking, foregrounding, highlighting topic, and all of these basically because we're still trying to really understand how these work in these different languages. So these were four parameters that we thought would be interesting to look at, and definitely the kinds of things that you've brought up. Randy would be, would think to come back and discuss again, once we've gone out, we've looked at some examples. What we're going to try to do now is to go out to our separate rooms, and we only have half an hour, so it's hardly time to say, what are we doing here? So you go to your separate rooms, and then you say, what are we doing here? Well, what you're going to try to do is to access the folders that we've built, where we've put together some examples of interlinear gloss texts for these different language families, and see what you see and see if there's anything there to really discuss, or where can we go forward in this attempt to first of all, describe what's happening with IGT in our subgroups, and perhaps make some recommendations like what you, what Randy was saying. Why don't we consider doing it in a constructional way? So let's see where we can progress. And so our goal is not to solve anything right now, but to just get you interested in the topic. When I gave a presentation on this at SOAS in December, David Peterson, Zachary, and who else was Linda Connerth, and they were like, oh, hum, this is really boring. It took five minutes of going into it, and they were like, okay, we see why you're doing this, and it is kind of interesting, and I wonder why this person did this way and this person did this other way. There's analysis behind it. There's, there's a theory from the mind of the analyzer for why they put things down. And so it seems like it may be interesting to discuss, but maybe it's not. Let's give it half an hour of looking at. And you're all such great minds and, and have done a lot of this yourselves. And so I'm interested to see what we have to report. So go out to our rooms. There's a sheet on that drive that has these four parameters listed. You don't even really need that sheet. You already know what those are. Somebody assigns some. Somebody, assign somebody as the note taker. And when we come back, each person won't have more than, say, three or four minutes, maybe five minutes at the most, to report back what, what your group discussed.
How do you get into the chat room?
Um, Adam is the, got the power now, and he's going to into those groups. And also, there will be a student worker who will guide you to the digest. We call them the IGT digest, if you're able to find them. Thank you so much, and have a good time for half an hour.